Community therapy and normality sports.
And.
And, and yes, the need for advanced. The need for advanced. So that to improve care, to minimize medical choices abroad. And to study the lasting effects of the. Diffuse specialists. Really have shown by informal on the job training that there are different people. We have talked that also. But what they said, what is the difference where the person said they are going to propose for better care is that. For example, they receive specialized individual social care over here. And some of these cases are beyond the level of which a general practice society can do. We need to find a way of really improve the care of the social care to our places. For example, eh, the. The people who do this thing in Nigeria, this is part of the law. There are no need for Nigeria to start to charge abroad to go for specialization. And it will minimize the, it is for support from Nigeria, Nigeria, the Catholic Church abroad.
Thank you very much, sir. We, we. Please, I'd like to please do it two minutes with just about a few minutes only, two minutes. Thank you very much. We need to move on to the next group. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate your commitments. I understand you took some treatments and we felt we really needed this. Thank you very much for coming. Let's take care of the work of configuration of physical therapy.
You know why I like to describe? I go one of, I tell you, I didn't even give the medical.
Two minutes, please.
My support chain for physical therapy, I didn't know where it goes. Because you're like the property of medicine.
You just like the word.
So I just say it to you.
You, you, you will be filled up by extensions.
My association, my association.
I am representing Ivan Stokes, the president of the World Confederation of Physical Therapy. Before I start, I want to confess that I'm privileged to travel to the United States in nineteen ninety-one to earn a specialty certification in physical therapy.
It's cool, yeah.
I give that importance of advanced care, clinical care, in any of these areas.
It needs, it needs to be reinforced.
In nineteen eighty-five, I was able to earn that specialty. And unlike many of my colleagues who stayed back and didn't come back to Nigeria, I returned to Nigeria after twenty-one years. Again, I represent Pima Stokes, the president of the World Confederation of Physical Therapy. What is important here in patient care? The health of the people of the world will be taken care, will be improved only by the individual nations and society taking care of the health of their people, first at the national property. A bill such as this is an indicator of the people of Nigeria through their activities, taking care of the health and wellness of their own people. Specialty training in physical therapy is very, very critical and critical and important. Because it's only through specialized training that patients can actually be best served. It is only through specialized training that a conscious environment such as Nigeria can actually be better served. It is only through specialized training, such as this field is focusing, that we are currently at stake overall health of Nigeria through the physical therapy process. That you see this in their more support, the efforts of the relevant bodies in Nigeria, including the appropriate relevant organization and government of Nigeria, in at least looking at this being. This bill is also very, very important. And as I said, I'm an example of the return abroad and I return. But many Nigerians remain there today who are still pursuing specialized training in physical therapy. And what is more, more and more Nigerians until this morning are traveling abroad to receive medical care. Upon return from medical to others, what they need is usually specialized care in physical therapy. So returning to Nigeria to receive specialized care in physical therapy is very, very important for their full recovery. This call here is a way of providing that specialized care that is necessary. What does it mean if, for example, a ninety-year-old fracture her hip? And we do know by evidence that if you fracture a hip today and you're ninety-five, ninety-year-old, seventy-five-year-old, chances are that your mortality within one year is very, very high. Which means that if you do a surgery for a ninety-year-old patient who broke her hip, you are invariably, if your sibling gets a special Nigeria physical therapy care that she needs, you are invariably actually pushing that patient to the end of the prison somewhere. John, I'm sorry, 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 sir. Sad, please. The issue here is not the importance of physical therapy. Everybody agrees a hundred percent on the importance of physical therapy. The issue here is what is being asked for. I mean, here, I mean, that's important. Because as a representative of the world body, I expected you to speak more on what it means asking for and not to talk about the importance of physical therapy. Yeah, because you're not asking, I, the importance of physical therapy, the health itself cannot be questioned. So don't talk about that. Talk about the bill and what importance, the implications and what is international standards. That's what I would have expected you to talk about, thank you. I have a question and I find it very important. This bill is important and it preliminarily is that maybe just to support this bill. All aspects of this bill as it stands is very, very important. No, they have answered, they have answered my critical questions, Sam. That, you know, my critical questions are asked. They have answered it because any Nigerian university can offer something in physical therapy. So please, I have another question for one of my colleagues.
So talking universally about our university, right? Honestly, we are not in the public learning or in listening to physical therapy. The concern is, do we need a specialized graduate college for physical therapy that cannot be provided in other institutions of higher learning? Looking at costs, looking at the implications, looking at all other, that is what we want to to address. Because the general problem of physical therapy.
Look, I'm not a professional, I'm not a professional psychologist, I get the compensation service. Self-dominance are not ever paid. We have to have money for catching and spending charges. Change is not from one man. It's a collective responsibility. Yeah, but I expect you far. The next one is. No, the next person is Nigerian Society of Physical Therapy.
Where, where you traveling to?
Hello, hello, the president of Nigeria. Okay. I agree. Of the House of Representatives Committee on, uh, on Health Institutions and other honorary members of the House. My president of the Nigerian Society of Physical Therapy, Mr. Afternoon, everybody. I'm Muda Lamusatawobawa, the Nigerian, the chairman of the Nigerian Society of Physical Therapy Academy State. I support the establishment of National Graduate College of Physical Therapy based on the colonial reasons. One, it will be important to the Nigerian health system. It will strengthen the bond of professionalism between healthcare providers. To standardize the physical therapy practice as it is obtainable in other parts of the world, such as US. To provide a fully provision of superior quality healthcare delivery. Thank you very much. We take the next, um, the next person is, um, the, the, Abidul Matif Rahman Alatunji Tywo. Is anybody like him? The Mystic, Stroke Survivors Support and Rehabilitation Club. Here, please. Please, let us try not to talk about the importance of physical therapy. It's a waste of time. We are here to do business. Thank you very. Let us talk about the reason why we should have an institution. So if your talk is on presenting physical therapy, we know about it. They are extremely important. Nobody is in doubt about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, this is Chairman An, uh, I want to, I'm representing Nigeria, the Stroke Survivors Support and Rehabilitation Club of Nigeria. I'm Dr. Michael Umulano, and I'm the chairman, steering committee of the SSRSRC. That is the Stroke Survivors Support and Rehabilitation Club of Nigeria. Uh, this club is a group that consists of stroke survivors and their caregivers. By caregivers, I mean primary caregivers and secondary caregivers. This includes neurologists, it includes their family members, it includes.
Those three who is going, of course.
Now, considering, I mean, concerning this bill, my chairman, Evangelist Yeku Olu Shedmo, has, I mean, in the memorandum he submitted, has identified that clinical training of physiotherapists will improve the quality of care being offered to stroke patients by physiotherapists. The main issue here is that there is a gap between academic training and clinical training. And this gap, we believe that when this bill is passed, it will fill this gap. Thank you.
Going straight to the point. Now, we take, um, the West African, the West African Physiotherapy Union.
Thank you very much. Um, well, the West African Physiotherapy Union brings together the member countries where physical therapy practice and training exists. And basically champions the promotion of physical therapy in terms of training and clinical practice. There was an online study in Nigeria which tried to file out preferences that is far back as two thousand and ten. And this shows that both patient care, uh, both patients and also physicians, there was a preference that specialization in physical therapy should be endorsed. Uh, this has already been mentioned by other speakers, but I want to ask, ma'am, chairman. Um, in Nigeria, we have a key problem of papri. Uh, this papri is promoted because there is no formalized specialty training in some of our existing, um, professional partners. In physical therapy, we will invest it, it is driving everyone. So we are asking, uh, we are supporting the decision of this physical training college because it's going to check papri. Uh, a lot of practices just create it anyhow because there's no, uh, share with the region of people somebody was specialized in a specific area of practice. I want to say that, um, a very successful surgeon have friends of physiotherapists who are good in their specialty areas. Because no matter how successful a surgery without a complimentary, you should like here by a physiotherapist who is still being, um, studying physiotherapy, so applied to neurology and also to taking physical therapy. Uh, we found that that's best surgery will result to nothing, uh, good. So we are supporting this during, uh, because it's going to promote specialization and with good specialization in physiotherapy that complements national health. Uh, it should not be only for the health care. We're talking about it in terms of health. Because we know that it's a national problem and if Nigeria should have such fields of specialization, to discourage papri and to promote specialization. With this, we have better healthcare in Nigeria. Thank you.
So can I ask you a question? What is the responsibility of the medical rehabilitation therapy, the board? If you're talking about papri, because I know that the, the, your world body has said that part of the ways to check papri is to wait for people to vote through registration and you can do, um, examinations, then you can intermittently to check papri and you issue certificates. I, I took time to read the decisions of your world body to the past four years.
First, while the board regulates, um, the practice of physical therapy, uh, we have made those challenges where a lot of people go and have their way. Because the board, um, cannot be everywhere. That is one.
Wow. So you are connecting your board.
I am sorry, I'm not the secretary of, because just like we cannot have police everywhere in Nigeria, uh, the board has its own legislation. A part of it, uh, I will go there. The board has a legislation, but talking about postgraduate training, ma'am, there is a need to improve clinical practices. As in, uh, the medical board, legislature has put the statement, there's need to encourage clinical specialization in physical therapy.
Thank you very much. I know we're here with any people here, we're not capable of going around to put quite frankly, in every profession in Nigeria, there's papri. That's why you have associations and that's why the national assembly has approved and passed into law most of these associations. So they have their own papri to make sure they check papri. So as an association, you guys should go back. This could, uh, further place, you go back and make sure that you issue certificates to only those who deserve to get certificates. Thank you very much. Medical workers' union, medical health and workers' unions.
Good afternoon, I don't know who's up, sir. My name is Silas Adamu, the secretary general of the Medical and Health Workers' Union of Nigeria. As you all know, my president has taken a new cast, so he has stepped into the presenting. I know I have to leave this, ma'am. I would like to demonstrate the presence of Medical Health Workers' Union in this hall by asking all members of Medical Health Workers' Union to stand up for. To demonstrate our support for this bill, I want to note to my lot about this case. What if I was the sponsor of the bill, say that all the contributors to this bill are showing support for this bill? And we are so grateful and we say, let the bill go on. Chairman of the House, I respect all existing protocols. Once again, comrades, you may now join us, sir. Ma'am, I nakedly counter one being here.
Because you are clothed.
And I can't, the redefinition or is the removal of the section of Andoya. Here I am, fully roped by support. The importance of physical therapy, I want to say that if this school, this college is established, it is known to prepare knowledge, skill, culturally competent, compassionate and reflecting especially physiotherapy practicality. The technical of functioning collaboratively and alternatively in the dynamic health environment. And specialization is the process by which a physiotherapist deals on a broad base of professional education and practice to develop a greater depth of knowledge and skills related to a particular area of practice. We should note that it is on this figure's note, ma'am. I want to say that this legislation is very important to provide for specialized training of physiotherapists, improve the quality of physical therapy care, impact on the health-related quality of life of the good citizens of Nigeria. Tourism and attract foreign scholars, potential foreign exchange eners. For these reasons, ma'am, the joint health sector unions tries to submit that the passage of this legislation is responsible, logical, right and just in to do. The problem here now is the issue of maybe residency, which is either now a contest because of perhaps job protection or job creation and cutting down of cost of going into that process. But I want to appeal here, if any other residency program have not been refused by participation or otherwise, let us also encourage others. These kind of things are things that will take away the salary in the health sector.
Thank you very much for that interest in this official. But I want to say that apart from residency, um, um, training, mastermind, I also had a, a, a problem with setting up a new institution. You know what? The last administration set up so many universities and they are still grappling with it. And you know the situation of the economy, ma'am. Let's not be sentimental about this thing.
No, no, no.
We have to, 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 we have to say what I have to say again. That is, that is the situation, we feel they're very critical point and the party may be other residency project programs are there. And the situation as it says today is that people in other residency programs that are there, we are not able to fund them. Thank you very much, of course, of course. For, shall we be that, very exciting, because some of us are determined to make sure that we will help across crisis and in the health sector. My colleague, one who will comment.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, the deputy chair, my distinguished members and the distinguished volunteers. I really feel happy to see the way you contributed, but there is one issue that we can't participate and if people recall even from the high tier, you see, nobody is in doubt and nobody is disputing the beauty, the needs, the exigency about this bill. But people are thinking about maybe implementation in terms of cost, money, funding. Let me tell you, Nigeria here, and I'm putting it to note, that we shouldn't be, in the near future, be bothering about finances because we knew that Nigeria is very, very rich.
Even the internship for job immediate path doctors is having problems because most of our kids are in teaching hospitals and the special hospital centers for recruiting are defeated because of cost, money. Let me give you an example, twenty fifteen forty, the federal government allocated only eighteen billion for all. Now twenty sixteen, this present administration has taken over two hundred eighty billion.
Can we ask a question, please? Like, coming back to that point, if at the time we go through the two thousand, like you said, if so much has been budgeted and, you know, one of the challenges we also have in Nigeria is the actual visitors. We all know about budgeting and we know about the visitors, but we can't buy, if the visitors are okay, if the visitors are okay and we are able to satisfy, we are able to satisfy the needs of the medical profession, why can't we take advantage of the medical profession? We can't, nobody says, nobody says, um, okay, hello, can I, can I finish this? Another question from the right place. So what we're trying to say is this, budget performance has always been within the range of forty to fifty percent, that I know. Let's hope that budgeted performance will be better, even if it's better. Ladies and gentlemen, I will not prolong the, physiotherapy, the power of Nigeria media communication.
Thank you, Chairman, ma'am.
Sorry, as a physician, I'm a medical scientist of Nigeria.
Um, the chairman of this committee, the principal officers of the committee, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, gentlemen of the press. Since this is, um, the last of the day that we have expressed interest on, I want to take the advantage of introducing my team. Here present are the national executive officers of the association and I want them to stand up for recognition. It is, there are some other members that are from different parts of the country and I also want them to stand up for recognition. Thank you. Like I said earlier, I represent over twenty-four thousand medical laboratory scientists in this country and my name is Aladuto Yosiradi. I, we, from the Association of Medical Laboratory Scientists of Nigeria, we are not physiotherapists. But obviously, we have critically examined this thing and we have noted the body. One, I am very glad to note that when some of the participants there were introducing themselves, one of them introduced himself as chairman of College of Nigerian Pathology. And of course, we also look at the need to strengthen the health system in this country. We want to look at the health system as a teamwork and when you look at a team, you have different experts, especially in the football team. You have goalkeeper, no matter how good your goalkeeper is, they, defenders and whoop.